... session to order. Topic today is short-term rental and residential property. Mr. David?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at your recent retreat back in April, you identified certain issues to be brought forward for discussion at work sessions. And we're having our first one tonight on short-term, or this afternoon on short-term rental residential property. I'm not going to read through the two page memo here, but just kind of hit a high point. I tried to bring forward, and the county attorney and I worked on this together, all the things that kind of survive around the universe of short-term rental. The last time you dealt with short-term rental was more of a land use perspective back in 2015 where there were certain amendments made to regulate them. Did make some changes, but then did not proceed with other type of regulations with that. I've talked to the treasurer who's here, as well as the commissioner of the revenue, and we also have folks you know are bed and breakfast operators and Lori, tourism manager. Best as she can tell, I'll make sure I'm not putting words in your mouth, but we're probably not collecting, not aware of anyone that are transmitting or collecting taxes. Taxes, so the ones that are on there are the regulars that are been on there, all the bed and breakfasts and things like that. So that's one issue. Then going down, the state has allowed for you all to adopt an ordinance that requires, that allows for registration and then certain other provisions in that. I've included the county zoning ordinance, the copy of the code of Virginia allowing for registry. Kelly Kemp, Assistant County Attorney, prepared a memo concerning creation of registry. The town of Orange adopted a short-term rental ordinance back in November of seventeen. I have put out it to replace copies from the town of Gordonsville who just adopted this on June twenty-fifth. They have now a short-term rental regulation, so I've not gone through what all that is, but we got a copy of that. Lori was able to get a copy from the town manager. Got some information there about the county's transient occupancy tax, the neighborhood legislation, the code of Virginia and transient occupant. Also, I've included in there Lori attended a 2018 tourism symposium thrown by the Virginia Tourism Corporation. There was one section of the presentation dealing with short-term rentals, one-on-one. I think that was some relevant, kind of a national, where this market, where these type of operations have been, where they're going. And then just to give you at least an idea of what it looks like on the landscape, we did some screenshots from Airbnb's platform as well, VRBO, vacation rentals by owner. Airbnb from Orange County is the destination put into the search. And then the VRBO were properties at Lake of the Woods and that was dated September, July second, so that was as of July second. I think at this point I'll stop, but we're certainly, county attorney, myself, and the other county staff are here, and the commissioner and treasurer are here as well.
Question on the tax, first of all, according to the ordinance, it looks like this was something that was adopted or maybe changed in nineteen eighty-six. And the definition is fairly broad. I mean, it goes on to talk about hotels, motels, boarding houses, travel campgrounds, and then something called other facilities offering guest rooms in the county. And I guess, have we, have we made efforts to assess that tax, or collect that tax, or impose that tax? Make a list of who might owe that tax, or is this just sort of been sitting idle or voluntary? I'm trying to get a sense of what position the county has taken so far.
I think that the issue we have is trying to figure out who's got the properties. Like on Airbnb, you can't go in there and just see who owns the property. You've got to actually make a reservation for it, tell you like proper location. So we can either find the location, look up to see who the owner is.
Well, yeah, the part that seemed to be, and maybe I was expecting too much, there seemed to be a description of this tax, and it seemed to apply very broadly. What seemed to be missing was the, in the ordinance, a requirement for figuring out who owes the tax. You know, either by a registration requirement, or a, some type of, it looks like in our ordinance, I didn't find language that caused anybody to come forward and say, "I owe this tax," or "I might owe this tax." Is that implied somehow?
I think they, I think they've been owing it all along. In fact, I think that's why the general assembly came up with this registry language. Because Orange and every other county had the same problem. We know they're out there. They're not voluntarily letting us know they're out there. They're not voluntarily paying the tax, and we have no practical way to kind of track them down. I think that's why the general assembly came up with this fifteen point two nine eighty-three that allows us to require them to register with a five hundred dollar penalty potentially if they don't, which might incentivize some folks, you know, to come register where they wouldn't before. So it is, the new ordinance doesn't necessarily give like additional taxing ability. It's simply...
It's a reporting thing. I think one of the things to keep in mind, we don't have a B ball tax, a business license tax. So in communities that have those, that tax, that's kind of a gatekeeper of understanding who has, subject to certain taxation, whether it's meals tax, short-term lodging, or business personal property and things like that. So right now, if, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have an honor system going on that if a lodging establishment is operating and the owner is aware, as a condition of operation, there's a tax liability that they can collect it, then it would be an honor system reporting, or somebody that could come to you all's attention, I guess.
But even if somebody goes ahead and registers, how do we know we're appropriately collecting the appropriate amount of tax? Well, you, I, we don't in anything. I mean, first of all, everything is basically on the honor system.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, you know, so there are businesses out there that are, that are operating that aren't paying sales tax, they're not paying income tax. So I mean, taxes are by their nature completely voluntary. Now, of course, some of them are really dangerous to, to mess around with. The IRS does not have a sense of humor. So I think what we're really talking about is how will we, how will we make this work so we're not just talking about it, we actually are able to put some teeth in this?
The other thing is, five hundred dollars to these people, that means nothing to them. They're getting twenty-five hundred dollars a week on some of these, so...
I'm looking at what they can make on this thing, and if you've got a make front home close to a million bucks, you can probably pay your annual mortgage with a hundred days of occupancy.
Exactly, so...
Which means that if you're not living in it, you're, this is a very profitable venture.
I think one of the things that I know Commissioner Dawn and I talked about, and I've had conversations with Mr. Billy, this is a couple of years ago, really the only way we go about it is you try to find out where these properties are and then able to send notice to the owner of record. One of the things that I think these platforms do, if you've got a dot gov, or any kind of, any kind of email address that's government affiliated, you're blocked from messaging the owner. And so some locality's gone through some Sarah Tippish, some covert ways of getting contact to the owner to be able to find out where these properties. Some of the larger localities, I know Loudon and some of these are large, have they made one-on-one agreements with these platforms? And the platforms then report to these localities who's registered on there, but I don't think we're at the scale where they even talk about this.
There's, there's, there is a, aside from the five hundred dollar penalty for not registering, there is a more draconian second step, which says upon repeated violations of the registry ordinance, an operator may be prohibited from offering that property as a short-term rental. So we, the danger that they take, if they don't notify us, don't get on the registry, and we do find out about them.
Somebody drops a dime on them.
Theoretically, we could, we could actually prohibit them from renting that property again. So there is, there's a pretty dramatic and drastic danger that they face if they don't register. And probably for me, the biggest issue is going to be, you know, educating people that are on these, that are doing these short-term rentals.
At that point, it's not worth two percent.
And I guess one of the other things, to go ahead and just go ahead and cloud up the water, there's potential zoning violation if they're operating these units and they don't live in them. And we do, there are examples of these as being investment properties out there. They're only offered for rental, they're not owner occupied. So then we, we're only complaint driven. I checked with the planning director and we haven't received any complaints of non-owner, of non-owner occupied short-term rentals.
I think if we adopt an ordinance like this, it's going to put it on the radar. We're going to get more complaints, once people realize we actually have something in place.
Okay, let me uncloud the water even more. We require these businesses to register, which I think is the absolute least we should do. If we do not adopt statewide fire code, we are basically saying we don't care about the safety of the people that are running the places. To me, it goes hand in hand, because we are now acknowledging that they're being rented out, and we're not protecting the health, welfare, and safety of the people running it.
But what are we doing for the bed and breakfast? We don't do the bed and breakfast, do we?
No, the bed and breakfast, when they start, they have to get the state inspections done. And just so you know, I don't think there's a bed and breakfast out there that's opposed to being inspected annually. And quite honestly, it may have, may have, or may not have made a difference with Chestnut Hill.
What about any other state regulatory or inspection requirements? If they, if they show up on this list, would they then be subject to any of those other inspection requirements?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Only if they, they had a restaurant, you know, food service in it, but...
And most of them don't.
Right.
There seem to be some exemptions in the state code that I, I didn't completely understand. It made it sound like, and I'll say it the way I first read it, which is probably not correct, but Tom, you can straighten that. Made it sound like that if somehow the transaction were handled by a real estate agent, either that they owned the property, or that they were handling the property for some owner in rent, that it all of a sudden became exempt from this registry. Is that...
Yeah, that is what it says. I think what they're, I think the thinking is, and I think probably the Realtor broker lobby said, "Wait a minute, we're reputable business people. If we're doing rentals, we're making sure the proper channels are being..."
I think that.
I'm just telling them.
Well, I, I mean, I guess I should have read it a second time, because when I read it the first time, I thought, that can't be what it says. Because if that's what it says, then all of a sudden, there's, there's a big gap in our enforcement ability in terms of having people register. If there's a, if there's an escape route, which just says, "I get my buddy, or my brother-in-law that's a real estate agent to do this for me," then I don't have to worry about it. I mean, is that...
Yeah, but if they're advertising, they're not advertising a unknown location until you buy. It's already known.
But if a, if a real estate agent is handling it, they're handling the finance. Are they required to pay the tax for the, for the person that they represent?
It will kind of depend on the nature of the relationship between the property owner and the real estate agent, you know, because what it says is, "No ordinance shall require a person to register pursuant to section of such person is licensed by the real estate board or a property owner who is represented by a real estate licensee." So the represented part...
That is what I read.
Yeah, that's what's up. So if you, if you've got a real estate agent handling it, then you fall outside of this. I think this was designed to catch the Airbnb folks.
But this doesn't necessarily, even because they're not registering, they still have to pay the tax?
They still legally owe it.
Okay.
But how do you find them if you can't cause them to register? It's that circle that I was caught in, that I, as Renee described, I, that seems to...
Yeah, because on the Airbnb stuff, there's houses on there, I mean, that you don't have any idea locating. I mean, we don't know if the person that's on there is just handling the property, or if it's the property owner. Even still, we can't get a location until you book a reservation.
I booked my vacation through VRBO this year in Florida, and I didn't get the physical address to the condo that we're going to until a week ago and going next week. So I had a name of, of the place that we were going to, and of course I could Google that and see what the physical address is. But until we were actually booked, they do not release it until two weeks prior to going.
Well, the, I mean, the real estate agents are actually advertising weekly rentals. So you've got some indication of that. I don't know whether, how you can pursue that.
Well, and I know a portion of the ones in Orange County, Lake of the Woods can actually take care of for us. Because they don't like it either. They know that they're there, but they're not enforcing anything. Because, one, they'll get that, what is it, twelve, fourteen hundred dollars for the rental, but also what is happening is the people are constantly either calling people in or getting guest passes. I don't know how they're doing it. But it's very obvious, the properties in there that are doing the Airbnb or VRBO.
Association can identify them.
Right.
And the complaining neighbors can identify them.
Right. And I talked to the general manager, Phil Rodenberg, that this was coming before you all for discussion and session. He said, "Yeah, I mean, between whatever either real or perceived violations of the covenants and restrictions and all of that, they don't seem to be taking too aggressive part of that." I asked him, I said, "At least from his perspective, if we adopted a short-term rental registry, would that cause any issues for them?" And he said, "No."
They do have in their, in their regulations that they can't, for no weekly rentals, but they don't enforce it.
And some of those properties, I've, four hundred dollars a night, three to seven night minimum.
Just like the woods would be about two thousand dollars a night of all those, of all those places.
Do we have any information from other localities that have successfully dealt with this? It seems to be the identification of where registration, building, the list, whatever, however you want to characterize it, that is the first order of problem. Has anybody that we're aware of found a way to deal with that?
I had a, I had a, just an offhand conversation with the town manager here in Orange, and he said, as far as he knew, everybody that was in the town had registered. And, you know, that may have been word of mouth between the property owners and things like that. I think we have a geography issue much more than...
Well, we've got enough indicators either through the Airbnb, or even through the, what's the local real estate, that we can send them a letter. It appears you were running this thing, you owe a, you owe a two percent room tax. Well, it seems like we're getting a little bit hung up on, on step two instead of step one. We need to look at what we want to do in terms of putting a policy in place. And then, and then secondary issue is how do we enforce it, or how is that working? Like I said, this is all, all taxes are, you, somebody's got to register. I mean, real estate taxes, you're kind of stuck because the county's more or less got an accurate listing of real estate. But all other kinds of business are basically voluntary until, until somebody reports them and we go out and look into it. So I don't, I don't think we can solve, I don't think we should try to nail down all the, all the different contingencies and how it's all going to play out first. I think that's a second or third step. Well, even if we don't adopt a registry, the people still owe the tax, whether they're registered or not.
Yeah, but if you don't do the registry, we don't, we don't have any teeth for anything.
The registry is just a means of try to, to get a handle on it.
Well, you're going with Mr. Johnson's statement. Really, it's taxable as step one, so this would be step two of kind of a second tier of kind of trying to gather the data as to who's out there, and then step three would be enforcement.
And it goes for, you know, education, I think is a big piece to this. To Mr. Johnson's point, oftentimes, communities will find, particularly on meals tax, where restaurants will under-report their sales. And I know of a few towns that have had to take restaurant owners to court and, you know, show the books and go through that whole process because they were running two sets of books. In fact, there was a restaurant operator in the city of Roanoke, just within the last month or so, actually got committed some jail time. Was found criminally guilty of not reporting meals tax. I don't know how egregious it was or anything like that. So oftentimes, the honor system, I mean, you only get an act on what is reported. There's not an auditing function that we go out in the field to do. And I'm not opposing, and that's not what I'm saying. I think getting a register of it is kind of this next step, and an education piece would be the two. How would we educate folks, you know, other than using all the real, the occupied real estate roles rather than vacant land and sending a notice letter to all owners? That if you're operating one of these, I mean, that's, that's, that's a mail notice kind of thing, and posted website, and on ads and things like that.
The people are going to cook the books, they're going to cook the books. I think, I think we had a situation recently where a restaurant that had a location in the town and in the county was charging the county residents the town meals tax and just, I guess, pocketing it. So I mean, there's always going to be those businesses out there that are, that are doing that sort of thing.
They were in the county?
Yeah, they were not in the town, but they were charging the town meals tax for an out-of-town, but in-the-county restaurant.
And they got rich pretty darn quick, didn't they?
I wonder where those got rebated to.
That's something, I mean, that's kind of against the law, isn't it?
Yeah.
But there's another...
Would this happen locally, or?
Yeah, it was here.
It's interesting.
The commissioner caught it.
I know that there's been at least one offer that if we were to enlist someone to do the footwork for us, and for the five hundred dollar registration, they'd take two fifty of, and we'd get two fifty of, and we wouldn't have to do anything. I'm just saying, that is, that has been offered.
Actually, I see a business opportunity or something. For economic development, there's revenue stream for the economic development department.
Well, I mean, one of our problems could be that there's a bit of a disconnect, I think, in how we define the rentals. The tax ordinance basically says, "Anything that, you know, is leased out." Whereas the zoning ordinance defines them as an owner-occupied kind of a situation.
I think that...
And, and those aren't the same thing. I mean, maybe we want them to be the same thing, but I think that's, one of the, to Mark's point, one of the early steps is, do, are we tending toward the tax ordinance language that says basically, "Anything that gets rented for lodging purposes?" Or the zoning definition, which is almost sounds like a B and B situation, that it has to be owner-occupied kind of...
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that this was, this was more making people running out of rooms in terms of the...
B and B-like kind of situation.
Well, not necessarily B and B-like, you're just renting out a room.
Like a boarding house.
Yeah, boarding house. If you're doing it for less than fourteen days, it's your, you know...
I think, Josh, I think then that language was dealing with these types of short-term rentals with fourteen days. I think, to go ahead and cloudy the water, let's get a fact situation, abstract fact situation. We create the registry, we educate folks that they have to come in. Somebody self-reports, "Yeah, I've got this property that I don't live in, but I've got it posted on all the platforms, and I want to register." Then we, then we're now aware of a violation of the zoning ordinance because they don't live in it.
But, but that's the point. Who, who are you going to ask to register?
Let's see.
Does it have to be an owner-occupied dwelling unit? Or, or is it, back to where the tax language was, which I've lost now, something far more broad?
Well, the registration ordinance uses the word operator, which it defines as the proprietor of, which can be the owner, lessee, sublesssee, mortgagie, and possessioner, licensee. So basically, the state registry says whoever's running the show is the one that has to register.
And that could be the owner, or it could be a real estate agent, or a friend, or...
Well, I mean, I could, I could theoretically rent a house on Lake of the Woods, and I'm a tenant, and then I turn it into an Airbnb.
So I guess part of this also, the discussion, you know, there's the registry, there's the taxation, and then there's the consistency or alignment with what the zone definition is.
Well, if I'm, if I'm renting out my house as a B and B, Airbnb, that's not one of the allowed uses, not one of the permitted uses.
Well, that's the point. Unless you fit that definition, it's not a permitted use. I mean, it, this is...
Would it fall under the bed and breakfast definition?
Well, that's the trick. Josh and I've had this discussion before. Technically, it's a residential use. The fact that a different resident's using it every week doesn't convert it from a residential use, potentially. I mean, we can, I, that one could be argued sort of either way. You know, what's the difference between releasing it on an annual basis, or leasing it on a weekly basis? That, you know, it's still...
A term, a termed lease.
It's still, it's still a termed lease, and it's still strictly a residential use.
So it's residential. So the, from the zoning standpoint, it's just we've now got two different people, or two different groups, living in a, in a single home.
Well, and that's, to me, these are areas that there's no quick easy solutions for because they didn't exist until this Airbnb and internet thing really popped up. I mean, yet boarding houses, which are easy to deal with, it's easy to, you know, they live there and they rent rooms. Okay, we can, we can figure out what's a boarding house. But this, you know, if somebody says, "Well, I'm leasing my house once a week. I have weekly leases. How's that difference than annual leases?" You know, and so that becomes tricky.
Also got the issue of farms that are in land use that are claiming tenant houses, but they're on Airbnb.
Thank, thank you. There are some of those, too. Are these people vacationing to work on the farm?
A working farm holiday.
Dude ranch. I think that still, the first thing, you know, we can talk about enforcement, all that other stuff, but until we actually say, "We're going to have one, this is the fine for it," all the rest of the conversation is pretty much pointless.
I can't see a downside to having a registry ordinance. I mean, what's, I can't see a downside.
Is it two fifty like Gordonsville, or is it five hundred like Orange for each occurrence? And at what, what point do you make it that we're going to really slap you down?
I think it's useless unless we go five hundred.
I agree, too.
Because, and even at five hundred, for the ones that are operating on a regular basis, it's, they could care less.
Until we terminate the...
What was the service charge actually? Well, but that, I mean, that's true. I mean...
Yes.
You can do that, that's like speeding. There are some people that don't really care, and they're going to drive as fast as they want to, and they don't care about anything else. You still can't, you can't make it a ten thousand dollar fine, just so you can speed.
The higher of the two, to me, is...
No, I, I can go with you on that, but I think most people will try to avoid paying five hundred dollar fine if they have to. Particularly when there's the backup of shutting them down completely.
Well, and I mean, we may not know all the locations, but everybody knows one or two.
I'm sure that we'll get the information. Getting this, getting this on the books, I think, is a good start.
Can the commissioner just raise, okay, it's abstract discussion. You have a violation, they're repeating, and they go on. I guess looking to the county attorney, we would probably have in a civil provision in this for us to go, you know, and join, and join them from operating this from a court. And the court ordered them to cease and desist, and then there would be cumulative fines from the court, then the court could impose on it, or something like that, right?
Right. Our ordinance would say that one of the remedies for your failure to register is we terminate your right. And then if you continue to operate, you're now in violation, and we seek an injunction from the court, enjoining you for further violations of our code.
Then you have the judge tell them not to do that anymore.
Talk for a minute about what group we're talking about, because I just... It's tough for a minute about what group we're talking about, because I, I just looked again at our current ordinance on taxation, and it starts out very broadly, as I, as I read earlier, to, to include, you know, other facilities offering guest rooms. But, but then it goes on, it says, the tax imposed under this section shall not apply to rooms or spaces rented for continuous occupancy by the same person, same individual or group, for thirty days or more. Which means I turn it over to a broker, and rent it to them for forty-five days, and then they can do whatever they want. So, I, I mean, are we, how do we define, for the public, the, the group that we want to have register? Is this, if you ever, for one day, rent something, is it, is it a minimum threshold? Is, is it, do we, do we invoke this continuous clause that's in the tax ordinance? I mean, I, I think we need to, we need to talk about...
The state code, the state, that's right, out of the state code.
Yeah, the, I mean, the, the key words here are continuous occupancy, so even if you subbed it to a broker, it's not gonna be continuous occupancy by the same person.
Unless the broker's living there himself.
Right, unless he lives there, in which case, it's a...
Then it's a short-term rental, under our definition, maybe.
So, I mean, I think our current tax code is, catches it. Yeah, and I think this is pretty much straight out of state code. The thirty days is a state code provision that...
It's section B under the...
So, what we want to say, then, is, if, you know, if you are defined as, among other things, other facilities offering guest rooms, then sign up. No threshold, no, no other...
We would say unless you are listed as one of these exemptions, sign up.
Which are the brokers, real estate, and...
I mean, the, the things that we see are all pretty much cookie cutter. Just filling the dollar amount up, too.
The only thing I'm concerned about is, you know, that, if somebody who does it once a year, when they go to, when they go on vacation, they want to rent their house out while they're gone, I don't necessarily want to get that person caught up in it, but, but otherwise, you know, it's pretty straightforward. So, I don't know if we...
Yeah, and I, I don't...
I don't know the best way to address that.
Yeah, and there's a similar, I, I don't know how much we have here, but in, in other parts of the state, you have situations where military families, particularly when they're, you know, when they get a reassignment for a six-month tour or whatever, they'll rent their place out while they're gone, and then return to it. I don't think we have a lot of that, but there's more than...
But that's not, that's not a problem.
There's gonna be more in the thirty days.
Yeah, more than thirty days.
I mean, I actually dealt with this on the other direction. I rented the city of Hopewell, as some military folks rent hotel rooms for sixty, ninety days while they're forth leave for training. And so, there actually had to be a process to separate those out, because those were outside that thirty-day window.
They rent the hotel rooms, the government picks up the tax.
Exactly. And the government refused to pay the tax, so...
Yeah, the government refuses to pay the tax.
So, I hear a sense from the board about establishing an ordinance to create the registry, is that...
Yeah.
I'd say that's definitely step one.
And then part of that would also, at least having us staff kind of work up, how would we notify, give people notice of this?
Well, depending on the timing, it could go out on the tax bills.
Yeah, I mean, by the time this is gone...
That would be the easiest thing.
Yeah, I mean, you're welcome.
I don't really think that's a good idea. You gotta have little old ladies call up and ask of me why I decent, why I decent that to them.
Well, because they might be doing it. I mean, I, I know some little old ladies that are a little crafty.
Very crafty. Yeah, don't let them fill you... Don't drag me into this.
I think, I think we could at least get a handle on what, what a separate mailing would cost to go just to residential properties in county. Kind of an initial thing.
Do we need, do we need to make any changes to any of our definitions to keep...
Well, and that's where, I, I think there needs to be some discussion by the board from the vast standpoint that our zoning ordinance says owner-occupied. We know there are properties that are offered on these platforms that are investment properties that are being solely rented for this purpose. Soon as we're aware of them registering, and they're not living there, then we, in kind of a...
Theoretically, yeah.
Inductive way, we found out there's a zoning violation. And then we wouldn't be collecting any tax because we would have to stop them from doing that. That's gonna be a diff, I mean, you've got to kind of work through how, how you want to, want to...
It would seem maybe we need another definition in the, in the zoning ordinance to cover the short-term rentals.
Or just make them, that owner-occupied is not, not necessarily required.
Well, we, we did this mainly because we wanted to make sure that somebody was there on scene, on the, on scene, to be able to be a manager or to, to deal with issues. And that's was part of that, that definition on short-term.
And I, I guess some of these, these properties, I know in more resort areas, the treasurer says going to Florida, that, that they will advertise, and bed and breakfast, I mean, Jay or Jack, the owner lives within so many miles or will respond, and then there's a satisfaction rate of how quickly people's problems are resolved and things. So, that's a, that's a marketing process. Because if, if the owner has a, allows a record of responding to renters' problems, then they probably aren't gonna be rented very often.
You could get rid of the owner-occupied, because you still have the issue of making them available, just deleting the owner-occupied portion of that definition.
I mean, I'm looking at Tom or John, I mean, that, that solves the problem, because if they register and they're not, it's an investment property and they're not there, we would end up having to act on it and say, you can't do this at all, period.
We can fix that part to make sure we're okay.
He said, the property owner or, or his representative must make themselves present and available, or make themselves available.
That could be digitally correct.
What's that?
That could mean that's just a phone call or digital...
Well, yeah, I mean, and you don't necessarily have to have the owner.
Communication, that doesn't mean they are local.
You can have a, a property owner or, or designated manager.
Agent, it's the occupied piece that I think that, that's stumbling this up.
So, are we, is someone taking an assignment to, to, to propose some language for an ordinance? Is that, is that where we're...
I, I think, I think what we can do, county attorney and I, and the rest of everybody that's collected here, that I've invited to the party, let's work up an ordinance. We can get alignment with what an amendment to the zoning code would look like to get the occupied piece out, and then at least think through, what would it be, a public education plan, and how would we implement that? And this would be just an initial one, I don't see us doing this annually or things like that. And then, I, I think it's a matter of, of folks that are doing this will soon find out and soon hear that there's this registry, that they're liable for, and I, I kind of come at this sometimes, ninety-five percent of the folks want to play by the rules once they know what the rules are. Then, then, then there's a five percent out there that you're gonna have to...
Is the registry available for public inspection, I would expect?
Sure, I don't see why it's, I mean...
So that there's somebody who says, there's a short-term rental next door, he can look and see whether that's been registered or not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why the registry, I mean, Tom, do you see any reason why they do that?
No, I would, that's gonna be for your most...
Public, good.
So, if we come back with a package like this, and probably give us thirty days, a couple meeting cycles to turn this around, and that, I heard $500 is the penalty?
Yeah, I like that.
We'll come back with recommended registration fee to at least cover some of our costs. But it, the threshold, at least, I'm gonna ask the board, I think the threshold on that's probably pretty low, because you want to induce people to register. And this is just part of the service that we're...
Who was it, the town had $35 or something like that?
And then certainly...
Fifty's a nice even number, fifty.
Why would we charge them anything to rent? I mean, we don't charge, like, if somebody moves in and starts a business, and we come in and let the commissioner know, we don't, there's no fee for that.
And we might get more people to actually register if there's not a fee.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
The tool, the, the incentive is the penalties if they don't.
Yeah, I, 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 look, I, I can, I, I think we could, we could do the quantification of how much time would be averaged, and, I mean, all that, that kind of drill, and, and it's gonna cost us way more to process this. I mean, you wouldn't set the fee to actually cover, recover a hundred percent of the cost of adminis, of managing and, and the registry. So, I'm, I, you know, if the board's okay, I think we, and if it's, comes too labor-intensive, then we can always institute a fee later on. But this would be a one-time registry, and that, when they no longer are operating them, they have a duty to let us know that they're no longer operating it, subject to the tax question, but we won't require a registration fee if I understand.
Make it an online form that makes it even simpler?
Yeah, I think we can, we can do some of that.
Yeah, if they're outside the county, they can register online.
That's not funny, no.
The, the Gordon's going, it says that you're exempt, among other things, if you're registered pursuant to the Virginia Real Estate Timeshare Act.
It's a requirement. That's also in the, in the state law.
Is that something new? I was gonna say, I had it, that's...
No, that's another, in addition to your licensed real estate brokers, that was another exemption.
It also says that you're registered with the Department of Health, you're exempt.
And in theory, in all of those, in fact, I looked at real estate licenses, and a, and a real estate license holder by law must comply with all local regulations. So, I think the thinking is, they're in a breach of their legal ethics if they don't properly register.
Well, I'm thinking that, one of the audiences that we, we need to get in this conversation, when we're a little further along and start looking at ordinance language and think, are the real, is the real estate community, because they're, they have a role to play in this, even though...
They're, they're not required...
They're not required to, to register.
Register. But if they're, if they're not, not encouraging or advising their clients that they owe a, a room, you know, tax?
That's right, that, that's, that's where we're going, is that, that, it sounds like they would have a responsibility to comply with our tax ordinance.
They do, they have a legal responsibility under their real estate license section, I pulled it up and looked at it.
So, if I send, so if you send a letter to the, the real estate agent who's advertising Lake Currents, that they've got weekly rentals, that ask him, maybe he's advised his clients that they're supposed to be paying their tax.
Well, yeah, I mean, and that's the point, is that, that another source of enforcing this tax ordinance, in addition to this registration list, could be the, the whole real estate community, because they have a responsibility.
Very simple way to address them is by the three real estate groups.
The groups, yeah.
The Greater Charlottesville, Frederickburg, and the, I can't think of the other one, that, Culpeper and...
Yeah, they were just here, well, they were...
Right, and their associations, they want to make sure that all of their members
Are complying.
Are complying. So, that could be part of their continuing ed that's required.
We're not talking a huge tax here, two percent, is it?
And there's actually a handling, I mean, there's an administrative ta, percentage of that that they can keep for themselves for a coup.
Yeah.
I'm not aware, I mean, that, you never see what they would charge or something, they'd charge up to three percent.
It might be to the advantage of the Airbnb to collect it, keep, what is it, fifty percent of it, or thirty percent?
Yeah. Actually, our ordinance, no, no, here it says, three percent.
All right.
All right, so, we'll, we'll come back to you, I'm gonna recap, and then we're gonna have a registry ordinance, no registration fees, zero penalty, $500. We'll work up an idea of public information plan, certainly have online registry, and then zoning ordinance definition alignment, essentially dealing with the owner-occupied thing. Is there anything else? Treasurer. And you collect this quarterly, right, in McDonald's? Or it's remitted to you quarterly? Do you send, and, do you send something out to them, or how?
No, they send it to us. I recently just had to send a reminder to one place telling them that they failed to file March, December and Marches, and they actually paid it last week, they paid it within a week.
Do we, do we charge any interest on outstanding bills or anything like that?
There is a section on there that tells them to calculate up to...
Okay, okay. Class one missed me here.
Part of the others.
Right.
All right, I think I have some direction here.
Okay.
All right, any, any other items on this one?
First up.
All right, we will adjourn the work session, if you so choose. And we have about... Ready? It's called a meeting of order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the agenda, any proposed changes to the agenda? Anyone have?
Mr. Chairman, I think we had one consent agenda item.
She was just a revised memo.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, no change.
No change to the...
I have no change, Mr. Chairman.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, special presentation and appearances, service awards. Mr. David.
Yes, sir. Chairman, as you make your way down, we have six employees we want to recognize. I'm doing the math here, we have forty-five, sixty-five, a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen years' worth of collective service from these six. I'd like to ask Donald Letner to come forward, he's a firefighter and medic with our Department of EMS, and he's being recognized for twenty years ser, twenty years of service.
Photographs, so, put on our, on our best side, except I didn't bring me. Congratulations, and thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to call forward to be recognized, G W Gray, who is receiving his twenty-five year service award, and he's our building official.
And a man, twenty-five years, G W. You smile a bit. We say, thank you.
And the last person that's able to join us today is Terry Frick, and Terry is receiving our twenty-year service award, and she's our technical services librarian.
Thank you, congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, member of the board, we have three employees that are receiving awards, but we'll make sure that they get them, and if I do, we'd like, we'd like to take this opportunity to recognize them. Albert DiSosia, five-year service award, he's a collection attendant at one of our solid waste collection sites. Amy Crist, twenty-five-year service award, is assistant library branch manager. And James Goodall, receiving the twenty-five-year service award as a, he's a library aide for our library system. All those are being recognized.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next is presentation for recognition of Bill Speeden from the National Weather Service. You gonna introduce this, Brian?
I think the National Weather Service asked, wanted to have this opportunity to recognize Mr. Speeden for his contributions, so...
Okay. Yes, my name's Chris Strong from the National Weather Service for, for this area. And in order to forecast the weather, we need to observe the weather, and our cooperative observers that we have across our forecast area are really the cornerstone of that. Measuring the temperatures, the precipitation, the snowfall, and getting that to the forecasters so we can better understand what's going on within Virginia. And the level of dedication that's needed to be a cooperative observer is truly astounding because... And the level of dedication that's needed to be a cooperative observer is, is truly astounding, because it's reporting to us every day, not just when it rains, not just when it snows, but every day, uh, uh, you know, every day of the calendar day, in the morning, letting us know how, what the high temperature was, what the low temperature was, and how the precipitation, amount of snowfall. And that forms the climate record for the United States, all the cooperative observers we have. And really, uh, no people really embody that more than Bill Speeden here and his wife Joanne. And we are here to, to present a fifty year award for doing that daily dedication every day for fifty years, letting us know what the weather is so we can better forecast it for you all and keep people safe in the weather that we get here in Virginia. So I do have this Edward Stole Award, uh, for Bill Speeden, probably should say and Joanne in there too. And actually, we were just talking, not only have they been doing it, uh, for fifty-two years now, but also his mother had done it before him. So actually, the, the daily record for Somerset, Virginia is in the record books going back seventy-two years, all the way back to nineteen forty-six. That's, that's something to be proud of. And, uh, we'd like to recognize you and Joanne here for, for doing this for us and for your, and, and your mother for, uh, for us and for really everybody in Virginia to help us forecast the weather for us here. I also have a, uh, letter from the director of the National Weather Service, uh, the entire National Weather Service extending his personal gratitude as well that I'd like to present to you all. But thank you so much for what you do, and, uh, really, this is, this is the least that we can do for all that you've done for us, so thank you, Bill.
We're, we're experts in yesterday's weather.
How's your forecast skill? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, it, it's, it's interesting to go on some of the weather sites and see all the local stations that are reporting. Uh, it, 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 you, you wouldn't think that, uh, it takes that many people to, to really put the whole picture together, but within the county, I don't know how many there are.
Are actually, will you explain the difference between the known people and, and, and everybody else out there?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's, there's a lot of people that give weather information at, for, you know, how much snow that's falling or various things when we get storms. But actually, to have that daily, every day in, day out record for us from the co- there's really only, I think in our entire forecast area, which goes all the way up to northeast Maryland, down to Charlottesville, out to the mountains, uh, there's only about, uh, fifty or so cooperative observers in our whole forecast area. And this is one of the longest records that we have within the system here.
Yeah. Do you, do you file that online, or is it, uh, you call it in or what?
Now we do. It used to be.
It's evolved, right?
And it's nice, because they have the temp, they have a, a, a recorder in the house that records the high and low temperature. But it used to be you had to go out and do the little flippy thing and.
Yeah, tech, technology has improved everywhere. For, for ten years of the fifty, they actually paid us. We made, I think, up to fifteen dollars a month and fifty cents a day for doing it. Then they cut the budget, so we have been paying.
And, yeah, it's, it's truly a volunteer thing, so I think that further that was impressive it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, thank you. Keep it up, Bill, fifty more years you.
That's right, then you get the hundred.
Yeah, we need a hundred year record at least.
Thank you, Bill.
You can be assured we're not gonna cut your pay in the next year.
Okay, and next we have the introduction of Dr. Cecil Snead, su- newly appointed superintendent of Orange County Public Schools. And with us, the distinguished chair lady of the Orange County School Board.
Good evening, gentlemen, Chairman White and other distinguished board members. And Mr. Brian David, uh, standing here proudly before you to introduce you, um, Dr. Cecil Snead, who is now our, um, new superintendent of Orange County Public Schools. And we welcome her. We are excited about him being here. He has new, fresh ideas. He is excited about getting in the community and getting engaged and, and learning about us and, um, becoming embedded in us. He has even now, his, um, side quote is, "We are O C." So at this time, I will turn it over and let Dr. Snead have, if he wants to say anything. Do you have anything you'd like to ask him, to be familiar with him at this time? Please do so.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, thank you, Ms. Page. I'd like to thank, uh, chairman, members of the board, Mr. David, for allowing me to, uh, be introduced publicly. I look forward to working with you. I've had, uh, just an amazing time already in this week and a half in Orange County Public Schools, getting to know everyone. Uh, I've dedicated myself to a lifetime service, uh, serving children and helping them make a better way so they can be productive members of society. And I think that there's been no greater, uh, reward for me than to be able to make that path a choice in my life and to be here in Orange County, to work with these children and to work with, uh, the good staff that I've been fortunate enough to talk with and learn more about each and every day. So I look forward, again, to us working together and, uh, paving the way, uh, and continuing some of the great stuff that you guys and ladies have put in place for our students in Orange County. So thank you very much for allowing me to have that opportunity. It is definitely an honor and, uh, we will make you proud in Orange County.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Okay, consent agenda, uh, the only item there, item four B, there's a replacement, an updated, uh, amendment in your packet, uh, that everyone should have, so.
Motion approved.
Okay, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, item five, new business, real property tax refund request from Edward A. Scott. Mr. David.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Commissioner of Revenue contacting me and that they had recently realized, uh, Mr. Edward Scott had been billed and paid real property taxes on a parcel which had no tax identification number, no transaction history, no plat, and no identified location. Mr. Scott paid these taxes on this non-existent parcel from nineteen ninety-one through two thousand seventeen, totaling two thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. With assistance of the Commissioner of Revenue, because I think, uh, Ms. Pope has gone through and really helped him, uh, get this straight, uh, brings this matter to you. And talking with the county attorney, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but, um, the ability for, to grant these refunds is three years back, but that's the extent of the Commissioner's authority. The board would then handle this essentially as a claim and that you all would then, um, uh, grant the refund.
The, uh, twenty-seven hundred dollars over twenty-seven years?
Do we have any sense how large?
I don't think we had it at this time.
Do we have any sense of how large this parcel that, that doesn't exist might be?
It can't be very much.
This is, this is just bizarre. I mean, I, so many questions to ask that I don't even, I don't even wanna start.
Anyone wanna make a motion?
Do we need to make, yes, I'll make a motion.
Any further discussion? Let's hope not.
It's just, we need something like this in every board.
Yeah, that's right.
Make a little humor.
Yeah, it is, it is interesting.
We didn't even know what election district it was in, so.
We spent an hour trying to figure.
It's in all five of them.
Anyone could claim it, I think. All right. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
I think it's funny, we spent an hour trying to figure out how to collect taxes from properties that are being rented, but.
Thirty seconds.
I don't think we have a problem collecting taxes, because we've been doing it on something.
We're too good at it apparently. Okay, old business, we have none, uh, Department Director, Constitutional Officer reports, the employee discount for childcare programs, Alicia.
Good evening, how is everybody this evening?
And you have an updated document for us as well?
I do. Um, so the document that you received this evening, the first page, um, child A through child R, they actually represent the kids that we have in our programs right now and their current statuses. Um, and so we wanted to show you kind of a chart of what they pay now, once we, um, implemented the discount, what they would go to pay and the difference. And the difference is about thirty-six hundred dollars a year for the kids that are currently enrolled. If you look at the second page, um, this is new information. Um, I looked at FY eighteen, because our years generally follow the same trend. Um, our revenues this year of the budget that I pulled this morning, um, were about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, expenses three hundred and forty-one thousand, um, leaving a difference of, um, a little under nineteen. And then if we implemented the discount, it would drop down to, um, just a little bit over fifteen thousand. So our programs would still be, um, breaking even and taking care of themselves. I also added a list of what we would need to make up that difference. Um, and so the, the chart below is kids who would be receiving the discount, so we would need eight new enrollees of a particular, um, thing being the full-time AM or, or a mixture of all of them, just to make up that difference. It wouldn't affect our, um, student to teacher ratio much, because our ratios are so high. We do, um, licensing has us at one to eighteen, we shoot for one to twelve, and so we would still be within that limit. So this was just one way we thought we could give back to the county employees, the school staff, um, and also entice some of those people to, um, enroll their kids in our programs. Um, so at this time, we respectfully ask that we allow this to happen.
Okay. Do you have information about, uh, non-employee, uh, children? Do you have any at this point, or you, uh, this, this discount proposed, that this applies to school employees and county employees? Are, are there other children enrolled in these programs in addition, uh, and at about how many? What percentage?
Um, let's see, our sites right now, I can tell you what we're licensed for. Um, Locust Grove is licensed for sixty-five kids, Gordon Barber and O E S are both, um, licensed for fifty. Gordon Barber and O E S run about twenty-five to thirty a day during the school year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's lower during the summer, just because of summer break and everything. Um, and Locust Grove usually runs between thirty and forty, and so if you take these kids out of the equation, then it's not even half the kids.
Okay, so half are coming from private, or just people in the community?
Over half are just within the community, yes.
Using this as a service.
So there's only eighteen kids here.
Correct.
Spread across all the, all three sites, right, okay.
All three sites, yes. And I think one reason why we see the full-time AM more, um, at O E S and Locust Grove is just the teachers are usually, are utilizing, those are all teachers' kids, and they're utilizing our program in the mornings so they can get into their classrooms and get ready.
Sure, right.
Um, one thing I did want to say, I sent over the chart, um, before to show you the comparison of what we charge now with the twenty-five percent discount. And the numbers are based on the actual twenty-five percent. My memo requested that we round those up to the nearest dollar to make calculating everything a little easier for our accounting. So those numbers will go up, instead of fourteen, twenty-five, it would be fifteen dollars a week for morning care and such, so. Does that make sense?
Okay. All right, any, any other questions for Alicia? Motion on this?
Yes, sir.
Smoke to approve the.
Okay. All right, any further discussion, questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, county attorney report?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Administrator's report?
Um, I have none, and I'd like the minister to reflect that.
Could you sum, could you sum that up for us?
You, you'll make that up when we're running out of time.
The end of July and August are gonna be.
That's right. Okay, uh, board comment?
Yes. I have, uh, before you, each of you should have, um, a packet that Allison provided on citizen request. Right, Allison?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, this is regarding the roads in, um, Wilderness Shores. Have to give Alan Slonder's one demerit, because people didn't do what they were supposed to when they took over the roads and replaced the signs. And now they need our approval to replace the signs. They can't just do it. Uh, it's for Somerset Ridge Road, uh, it's to, um, request to look at lowering the speed limit there. Rather than a actual speed study, they should be able to do it if it looks like, and it does look like it should be lowered. And then, um, Pheasant Ridge Road, and then the streets in the subdivision are Pheasant Ridge, Wildflower, Gosling Lane, Bluebird Lane, and Hawkenest Court. They just, they failed to put new signs up, so I'd like to, uh, make the motion that we, um, authorize the state to do what's necessary to bring those roads to the correct signage.
And you're requesting, uh, twenty-five?
For the entire neighborhood.
Neighborhood, okay.
And then, um, the thirty-five or the appropriate speed for Somerset Ridge.
Okay.
Believe, um, attached behind that email is a copy of the draft letter and resolution that I would send to V dot, and we just request that the appropriate signage and appropriate location be considered.
All right.
I, I also have one.
Okay.
I was offered a complaint from Mr. Crozier from one of my constituents on Hook Road. Uh, one of my employees also lives on Hook Road, and she echoed the same thing, that, uh, people drive like madmen back there, and, uh, they would like to request a speed study and have the speed adjusted so that we can slow the culprits down.
Okay, you got the information that you need on that one, Allison?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Motion?
I would motion for both mine and Mr. Davis.
Okay.
I would second that.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. One comment as well, I, uh, was able to go to the playing in the park event, uh, Saturday night. It was really well attended. It was, of course, it was a beautiful day and, uh, uh, the, the, uh, the event caters particularly to the younger children. And there were, you know, herds, I guess is the only way I can describe them. There, there are groups all over the place. It was, it was, uh, very, uh, interesting to watch them. They had a good time. Uh, the, uh, the, the staff, Parks and Recs did a, along with lots of help, uh, from others, did an amazing job of putting that together. It was, uh, it was a very smooth operation. There was plenty of food and, and, uh, entertainment, uh, and the fireworks were, were really good. I, I just, I really wanna recognize all those people that, uh, sponsored the event. I know the, the county participated a little bit, as did the town, but there were a lot of individuals that, uh, ma- contributed to make the fireworks the, the kind of event that, that you expect on the Fourth of July, and it was really well done and, and spoke well for the county. So, uh, kudos to all those involved, particularly the, the staff, Parks and Rec staff and.
I think the only downside, I think Tim's requesting a parking garage out there so they can put more cars, because I don't know where they put all those cars out there. It, it was just non-stop going in up until the fireworks stopped.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, and of course, exiting takes a while. It, it's a, you know.
They'd as well orchestrated that.
But it was, it wasn't bad at all. It was a, it was a, you know, the, the event was well done. I, I, there were a lot of people there that I didn't recognize. I don't know, uh, if they were people from out of the county as well as in the county, but, or what the draw was. But it was, uh, it was a very popular, well-attended event, and it was carried out, you know, very nicely. All right, any other board comment?
Uh, I would just like to mention that, uh, two weeks ago, uh, Mr. Crozier, Mr. Frame and I, uh, went to Washington.
Oh, yeah.
Had, uh, I think, a very useful experience, uh, at the, uh, Eisenhower Executive Office Building. Uh, we had a conference, uh, where we were, um, met with, um, a couple of cabinet, uh, officers and an assistant to the president and, uh, several under secretaries and deputy secretaries and so forth and so on. Uh, I thought, I thought it was a very, uh, very useful, um, it was, uh, it was not a, uh, it was not a political exercise. It wasn't a rah 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 for us kind of exercise. It was very straightforward. These are some of the things we're working on that, that we know touch on local government. Uh, there was a lot of attention paid to the opioid, uh, problems. Ben Carson, uh, was, uh, was one of the ones who spoke to us, um, and spent a lot of time on that. Kellyanne Conway also spent a lot of time on that.
She had a lot of statistics written up in her head, because she just talked.
I mean, very, very impressive group. Some of the, uh, some of the, the sort of unfamous ones were very impressive with their knowledge and their, and their willingness to answer questions and engage with, uh, a roomful of. and engage with a roomful of supervisors who all had different ideas about what should be the number-one topic of the day. Several supervisors asked questions, there were some who even asked two questions. You know, there's always those kind of people in the crowd, so.
Gee, what a surprise.
But I was, I was very impressed. It was, it was, it was beyond my expectations of what would be going on. Because I was frankly, cynically kind of expecting sort of a pro forma, you know, dog and pony show. But I found it very useful, very helpful.
And they plan to do that with other state delegations?
They're doing it with, my understanding is they're inviting all fifty states, not only the local officials, but the state legislators. So they're, they're doing all of that.
Chris Snyder was telling me that that thing got oversubscribed by a hundred and fifty people, but they turned away.
Well, I, I think it didn't occur to them that maybe nearby states, particularly a state that's got ninety-some counties and so forth and so on, there might be a goodly enough, yeah, there was a good number of people there.
Yes. And they, first time I've dealt with the feds where they were actually open and wanted to help.
Yeah, it was interesting, and I hadn't heard this, that a couple of the supervisors mentioned the fact that when a vet gets incarcerated, they cut off his benefits, especially those that need for drug rehab and anything else. And I saw that the.
Not only, not just incarcerated, but.
Charged.
Charged, not convicted, but charged.
Really?
Yes.
And so that was something that, again, after they spent all the time talking about opioids, what we needed to do with opioids, and then to hear that there is some either, either a regulation or law that is, that screws up what their, what their efforts are.
Right, and it was really interesting because both the VAco and NACO representative, Ruby from King George, was the first one that brought it up, because obviously with Dogron down there, they deal with it a lot. So it was brought up both on the state and the federal level.
And one of the more interesting, this is sort of not terribly important, but I was, Lee and I talked about it a little bit. There was, there was one supervisor who stood up. Broadband was mentioned several times, but one supervisor spoke up and talked about how half of their county was unserved by broadband. The amazing thing was, he was from Loudoun County.
Yes.
I'm like, how on earth can you be in the same county as Ashburn and not have countywide broadband? So it made me feel, made me feel slightly better about our situation.
So you want, you want to be like Loudoun County?
Well, it's like, I don't feel quite as far behind the curve now, if Loudoun is still trying to figure it out.
The other thing, at least two or three of them mentioned six million unfilled jobs in the country. And some comments about how are we gonna, how are we gonna get our workforce ready to meet those needs?
And, and one more thing, you know, shut up. Kellyanne Conway had, what I, she thought it was an amazing statistic, and I did too, that when they had, they've had a couple of them, apparently a federal, you know, day when you can turn in your pills. And the first day, it was, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was eight hundred and ninety-some thousand pounds of oxycontin and all this stuff. Pills, pounds, eight hundred and, I think it was right around nine hundred thousand. And they did it six months later and they got even more.
Right.
Now, that's a staggering amount of, of stuff that's been over-prescribed, or, you know, it's out of, expired or whatever. What is, what do we call it, Clemency Day or, we have them at the landfill, but not for, not for, not for pills.
Just for tires.
For motor oil and that sort of thing.
Amnesty.
Amnesty Day, yes, yes.
Yeah, that was, that was mind-boggling.
So you began to get an idea, because this were just the pills people were wanting to get rid of, you know. How many, how many millions of pounds do people say, no, no, you're not gonna get my pills?
The health department has a little packet that you can put your pills in, put some water in, mix it up, seal it up, and throw it in the landfill. Those things are basically, it's, it's another way of doing it. I managed to get about thirty or forty of them, and I turned them over to Triad. Thirty-four packets.
I thought you were gonna use them all yourself.
I got thirty or forty, I turned them over to Triad, because they're the ones that should be trying to distribute those and things.
And that, that was another interesting statement was made about the fish are now addicted to the opioids.
Yeah, there are some marine, marine animals that are becoming addicted to opioids.
Because people.
Flush them.
Yeah, flush them and.
And the waste treatment facilities don't extract or render them used. Waste takes out nitrogen, phosphorus, that's about it. And, and, and tries to kill off the, the bad bugs, and that's about it. There's, you know, there are no techniques for taking out, you know, opioids or any of the other drugs that get into the system.
So the next time you see a fish that's not acting right, it might be going through the DT, so be cognizant of that.
Not that you're catching the fish.
That's right.
You can get a high-eating fish.
That's right.
I don't think we've met since the, somebody mentioned the tire amnesty day, that, that obviously was a big success. Congratulations to all those involved in that, apparently the. I was, I was talking to the guys as they were coming in, and I'd ask, where'd all these tires come from? Well, someone said, these things, they've just been accumulating in their garage or in their back barn. But some of them were saying, somebody threw them in the ditch alongside my property, and I'm getting rid of them now. And that was, that was more than, more than once that I heard that. Well, that, that, it seemed like that was an idea that, whose time had come, people were responding. I, I don't recall the numbers, but they were, they were, there were a lot of trucks and a lot of tires. Thirteen hundred and thirty-two tires and like eighty-five, a hundred and thirty-five vehicles, something like that. And, I mean, when I got there, I was trying to get there early, and I had to go down the left-hand lane from Route Twenty all the way to the, because they were lined up.
That's amazing. I, I didn't make it, I had intended to, but I begged off at the last moment. But I, I'm glad it went well. You think you filled up three trailers pretty much, didn't you?
I think it was two trailers, that's all we had there, two, I think. But there weren't.
But there were some left over, right, yeah.
And some of those guys were busting their tail out there. Hard work.
Yeah, it's, it's hard work.
They gave me the job of just, you know.
Waving.
Waving a bit.
I asked Jason that Monday how it went, and he said, three hundred and sixty-three days left to the next one. So he was already thinking of the substance, planning on the next one.
All right, any other board comment? All right, any questions on the information items? Appointments to boards and commissions, anybody have any? Yeah, I do. I've got Jeff Johnson is an at-large member of the youth commission, and his expires on September thirtieth, and he would like to be reappointed. Okay. So move. Any others? Okay, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, let's see. Calendar items, you have an updated calendar in your package to add the. What are, what are we adding, the airport commission, sorry, yeah, meeting on the seventeenth at five o'clock. So I don't know if that had been scheduled or just left off the calendar, is that something new?
I think it was a new meeting that was scheduled, yes.
All right. Any other questions on the calendar? All right, close meeting. Oh, did you guys?
Just one thing real quick, our board historian had brought in.
Oh, yeah, I meant just to look at that.
No, no, I didn't bring that in.
Oh, you didn't bring that in. Commonwealth's attorney worked with that national magazine to get the whole courthouse on it, and so I thought she wanted to meet it.
Looks like some interesting articles in that thing.
She just shared that with the board.
My apologies, I thought it was. All right.
It can be archived by the board historian.
Duly noted.
In fact, maybe you should. Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
All right, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss and close meeting the following. Discussion of the salary benefits of a specific public officer, discussion concerning interviewing the prospective candidates for employment as fire chief, discussion of the reassignment of specific staff members in county administration, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring divisional legal advice by such counsel specifically, an agreement between a county sheriff, and an issue concerning the county border with an adjoining county. Whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty seven eleven A one and AA to the Code of Virginia, such discussion may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved, as the Board of Supervisors of Orange County is hereby authorized discussion for state matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So move. Any questions, any others say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close. You're up.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Goodwin?
Aye. Okay.
How's yours?
Thank you. Okay, public comment. Anyone signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
Close public comment. Get this thing over here so I can reach. All right, we have two public hearings tonight. First one is rezoning eighteen oh one involving Duelin Lane and the mine-run area of the county. Mr. Frederick?
Yes, sir. Gentlemen, this is the second phase of a board-initiated rezoning. You all approved the first phase, which was in District Four, I believe, last year. This particular phase affects six parcels down on Duelin Lane. I will direct you to the draft resolution that's in your packet as to what the changes entail. I think that'll do it justice rather than me describing it. And generally, this is to correct what we've termed legacy zoning that dates back to the sixties. This zoning actually aligns the current use of the property with the zoning. Planning Commission's recommended approval, staff also recommends approval, and I'll stop there.
Okay.
Lumber used to sit on it, it was zone commercial.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I just wanted to point out, this was brought up at the planning commission level, the one parcel, I think twenty-six. The ad that went in the paper actually said it was being zoned to R one. It is correctly reflected in your ordinance that it'll be agricultural, I just wanted to point that out. We're good with the legal ad, I've talked it with Tom, that's, that's fine, it's just something I wanted to bring to your attention.
Okay. All right, let's open the public hearing. Anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Close the public hearing. All right. Any comments or questions for Josh? The, I have a related, but, but I guess peripheral comment at this point. I got a call yesterday from, as you see on the map there, twenty, the owner of twenty-nine B wanting to be included in this process, even though he was noticed and visited several times and never responded. So there is a possibility that, that some others that were identified but didn't respond or haven't decided in a couple of cases. So there's a possibility, at least, that this, there could be a phase three here. I'm not suggesting it at this point, I would rather not, but there are people that have all of a sudden begun to focus on this and realize, oh, my gosh, this is actually a good deal, I should have, I should have taken advantage of it, but didn't, so I just. For your information. Okay.
I would, I would make the motion to approve the zoning.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I guess this needs to be a roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Frame?
Aye.
How's yours?
Okay, here's you. All right, hearing number two. Also, Mr. Frederick.
I, I never, I never thought I'd see the day where these would actually come before you guys. We started working on these planned development districts and the related text amendments, in fact, two and a half, three years ago at this point. But the second public hearing before you adopts three new planned development districts into the zoning ordinance. These are the planned development business, planned development mixed-use, and a third one, which is called traditional neighborhood development. And you can read from the language here, these are only applicable to the Germana Wilderness Area. And they really encourage implementation of the GWAP as, as drafted. Again, this went through the planning commission, they've recommended approval to you all. We recommend approval, but, Mr. White, I understand you had some things you wanted to discuss with some of these, so I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Okay, well, let's see if we have any, any public input, because what I have is, is in the form of public input, frankly, so. Open the public hearing, anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Close the public hearing. There is, I did get some input from a couple of surveyors, and actually, one surveyor and a couple of engineers. They actually took these three ordinances and sort of went through the, the exercise of, okay, if I were to try to do this, what would I, what would I like, what would I not like, what gives me trouble, what do I not understand? And basically, on the planned development business one, they were, they were fine. There was little, little question or comment or concern about that. On the mixed-use one, there are about eight different areas, and if you have your copy in front of you, I can, if you like, I'll quickly point you to some line numbers and give you a flavor of what, what some of their, their questions are. These are, these are all relatively minor, or in some cases, very minor, just wording. The very fir, the first one is, would be on line one seventy-two. There's, and to make sure that we're all on the same one, it should be in section seventy-five, five sixty-seven, the sub-paragraph B, and it's called minimum area devoted to non-residential uses. Is that what everybody's seeing is line one seventy-two? The, the issue that came up there was this, there's a requirement there that thirty percent of the gross acreage be devoted to non-residential uses. And the issue is that that works fine if you're developing, you know, twenty acres, maybe thirty acres. What if, what if you're developing a piece that's a hundred acres? It's not likely that you're going to, out of that hundred, have thirty-plus acres of commercial. That's a lot of, that's a lot of big box or medium-sized box or other kind of box. And so the, the request there was that we consider, that we consider having that be either apply to parcels up to a certain size, and that, let me just throw out ten acres for discussion purposes, that the thirty percent applies up to something like a ten-acre piece, or maybe the, the minimum there, twenty-acre piece. But once you go beyond that, it, it, that particular requirement seems to get skewed out of, beyond what the intent was. Obviously, the intent was to have as much commercial and, and non-residential development as we can get. But at some point, it makes it not, not workable, and so that's the issue there. My proposal is that, after talking with, with Tom earlier today and, and with Josh, is that we, let me rattle these off really quickly and. we, let me rattle these off really quickly and, and that Josh do some redrafting, because there's too much, I think, to fix on the fly. Or at least we run it, we've tried that before in the past, and I would say not terribly successfully, so.
Let me ask.
Sure.
When you're saying thirty percent devoted to non-residential area, does that have to be commercial, or it can't be open space?
Well, that was one of the questions. See, that, that's why this needs to be thought about, because there's a separate requirement just below that, line one seventy-eight, that talks about the open space, or, or common space, common or open space. So the question is, is it additive? Is it, does it include parking lots, open space, has to be commercial? See, we need, the, the, once you start to try to actually do a plan, you have these questions, and I think that was, that was what I was hearing. The, the.
So, so we're saying that you could have seventy percent residential, the other thirty could be either the twenty percent in, in open space and another ten percent in commercial.
Well, the wording there is, is not exactly clear. Is it seventy percent of the residential, or seventy percent of the gross area? I think it says seventy percent of the residential. Could be of one type.
It's the intent, but that's not the.
Okay.
There, this is just an area that, again, the, these guys took the time to try to figure it out. On line one eighty-four, the, the, the request there is to combine the subitem number two and three. Because what I, what, on one eighty-four, what that sentence says is that, in order to get counted in the open space, it's gotta be ten thousand contiguous square feet. But just above that, it says open space is plazas, squares, recreational areas, playgrounds, picnic areas, you know, bank paths and all sorts of other stuffs, which may or may not be ten thousand contiguous feet, and therefore would not be accounted to or credited against the goal for the, for the open space. So there's, the, the suggestion is that numbers two and three get combined to read something like, beginning with three, a minimum of eighty-five percent of the dwelling units shall be within a thousand feet of at least a ten thousand square foot contiguous open space. Which means that.
You could have smaller ones, but you had to have, at least, everybody's gotta be close to a ten thousand square foot.
Eighty-five percent has, had to be close to a ten thousand, right. And, and that seemed to be a rea-, that seemed to meet the goal that we were trying to achieve there, sort of flipping in on its head. Let's see. Then on one ninety-two, here's one we just, we need to correct the math. The, the, the la-, the la-, the sentence begins in the middle there, it says, the maximum density bonus shall not exceed twenty percent of the total number dwelling units permitted by this subsection. Well, the, the math apparently doesn't work. Your, your starting point is five, twenty percent of five is one, but we just said you could go up to two. So, you know, it, it, that would have to be forty percent. What I suggested to Josh is that we consider having that read, the maximum dens-, density bonus shall not exceed twelve dwelling units per acre. I'm told by these people that that's sort of the, 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 the norm today, that especially close in to the center of a town center, that, that the densities are, they're, they're putting two residential levels above a, a commercial. And so, those units really close in could be up to twelve, if you add open space and get the density bonus.
Okay, so you're saying additional twelve, additional twelve units.
Not additional twelve, a total of twelve.
Total of twelve.
Right. Start, right now, it starts at five.
Okay.
As you see on line one seventy-five.
You're saying five percent.
Five percent, add five percent to the open space. For each five percent, it says you get two more, but then it caps it at one. That, and that's, that was the, the way they interpreted. So to clean that up, the suggestion is that we, we, rather than percentages, that we just say it gets capped at twelve. You can't get a density bonus that takes you beyond twelve.
Just to be clear, though, the, the density bonus is the total number of dwelling units for the entire site, not, not per acre. That is, adds it to whatever.
What is the, what is the density? Maximum density is five.
It starts out at five.
Five, okay, all right, got you.
And there's also a proposal that we consider doing, starting at eight, apparently eight is the standard number. And I was actually gonna come back to that, but that, that's another recommendation, is that we begin, we begin at five, I mean, at eight. So line one seventy-five would say eight, and then line one ninety-three would say, would max it at twelve. They referred me to some examples in Spotsylvania for, one of which I was familiar with, and that's what they did there. They, the first row was, was twelve, and then everything behind that, they were all done at eight. Because what they're doing is two residential levels above one commercial level.
Oh, I'm just, because we've been doing this for so long, I just wanted to, to kind of jog your memory. We kept that low on purpose, and it was to encourage more people to use the density bonus. That way, we get more open space and increase density. So it was purposeful it kept low, but we can certainly up that if you need.
Let's see, two oh nine, the, the question there about alleyways, right now, it reads that the right-of-way no greater than twenty feet. The suggestion there was that we probably mean pavement no more than twenty feet because of their fire access and, and large equipment access, the, the actual right-of-way could be wider than twenty. Related issue is that some alleys are actually two-way traffic. And if you, you know, if you want to allow for two-way traffic, you're gonna need more than, than the twenty feet, so.
And I would think an instance where you have reloading in, in, in unit parking, where you have front stoops, and then you come around the back alleyway, you're gonna need at least some passing.
Right. The, the, the concern was that, that a twenty-foot right-of-way is not sufficient in some cases.
Right, right.
And, let's see. I think I, I have. On line two thirty, you're talking about it eight feet wide for the sidewalks. I think the intent here is, in the commercial areas, that we have nice wide sidewalks, and, and it's, it's talking about that. The issue came up, it says in non-residential areas. So it begs the question of what about in the open spaces, what about around the playground or a park, or these kind of things? And, and I don't think our intent is to ask for eight feet of sidewalk, necessarily around a picnic area or a soccer field. And so, that's one that we need to more carefully define what we're, what we're after there. Let's see. The, the, the main one, on, the only other one left is on two sixty-five, and this is a, a little bit bigger question. This talks about principal structures and uses, and it says multiple principal uses may be allowed a lot, but only one principal structure. Well, we've been around our, our, and as Josh points out, our entire zoning ordinance talks about one principal structure. It seems to me that what, what these guys are telling me is that it's not unusual to, to have a lot that's fairly large, and it could have quite a few buildings on it, many. You know, two, three, four, five, eight, depending on how they actually designed the thing, and still be on the, on the same parcel or lot.
What you're saying, you're not forcing them to cut up the parcels.
That's right. And so, the, the suggestion, their suggestion, and I think it bears some discussion, is that this read multiple principal use, principal uses and/or principal structures may be allowed. That's why.
Was there rationale behind the one principal structure?
Josh and I tried to come up with one today, but other than history, we couldn't.
I was gonna say, when you were talking about the, I'll call them taxpayers. Was it down Spotsylvania courthouse? Is that there?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and that may be a situation where it may be one lot and have four different principal structures.
Right.
On it, which is, makes sense.
Yeah, but I can't see why. Why it would be a problem.
Now, I, I will point out to you that the, the business, the planned business development one, the one change or the one issue is exactly this, it has the same language. Multiple uses are allowed, but one structure, and so, we might want to, even tonight, tinker with that or change both, yeah. So, anyway, that, those, that's the recent input that I had. Some of it is, as recent as this morning, and, and I, I, all of those are worth examining, and rather than try to take this to a, to a vote tonight, I think it would be, as you can see how long it took me to ramble through these, it would be better to let.
Would you want to change that, see it on paper?
See it on paper, right.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we need to see the whole thing, just the effective sections.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we, we could, let me point you to the line. Line seventy-one, in the business one, you know, potentially, we would be safe by saying, they're changing line one seventy, line seventy-one to read multiple principal uses and principal structures may be allowed per lot.
You don't even need principal structures, could be just in, in structures.
Potentially could be just in structures. And that would fix that whole ordinance, and, and we could move to, to vote on that one.
I'd like to see us do that.
I propose that we take these one at a time, by the way, even though it's all one public hearing and they're together, we probably should deal with them separately in our adoption process.
And then we're deleting the rest of that sentence.
Correct. Well, since we're on that one, any, any further discussion or con-, or is there a motion as to?
I would make a motion to approve that. With that change.
With that change. Okay.
I would second that.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay, let's, I guess we do, need to do a roll call again, don't we?
No, 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 because you're not adopting the underlying ordinance, you're just making the changes. You can do those sections.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Now, is that for the change, or for that was it?
I mean, my understanding is you're just, you're tweaking the language, you haven't actually, or were you trying to adopt that?
Well, we, we might, right now.
Adopt that with the change.
Yeah, that.
That'll take a roll.
That'll take a roll call, so let's do a roll call on that motion.
So we did the change.
Um, Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
So did the same people make the motion in second?
It was the same unanimity. If I, if, if that's a word. All right. And I don't know that we need a motion on this necessarily, but just, just by consensus, that, that the, the mixed use one, I think, needs to, we need to see the, the actual text of those, those changes.
I think we need a motion to defer, or you otherwise kill it.
So move to defer.
Defer to a specific date.
Next, next meeting? Is that, is that doable, Josh? Two weeks from tonight?
I'm gonna be away at a conference that night, so no. I could have Thomas stand in if you'd like.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah, well, let's. I'd like to proceed, but, hey, I think that's good, yeah, let's, let's, let's try to do that, and schedule for the next meeting. You want to make a motion to defer to the next meeting, is that what you're?
Yes, that was my motion.
Could you, you can send out ahead of time the edits, I'm sorry, the edits.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the third one, the, I'm, I think we have a choice of adopting this as is with the recognition that it's probably not going to get used in its current form, because if you stack this up beside our existing R three, to some extent, even R four, but particularly R three, which is a planned residential development, which allows for multifamily and, and single family and all sorts of stuff, there, there are some significantly increased requirements in this new ordinance as compared to the R three. But this new ordinance doesn't let you do a whole lot that you can't do in, in the R three. And so, I, I think, long term, we're, we, we probably should take our R three and this new district and sort of combine them into a single district. Because part of the intent of this new one was to.
But you're still with the R three and other G, in other areas of the county.
Yes, yes, but ta-, I should say, take the elements of R three, I don't mean to away with it.
Okay.
Take the elements of R three. Because the, the good thing about this new, this traditional neighborhood is it, it does sort of raise the standards a little bit and, and requires some additional planning and thinking, but it, it does something fundamentally that, that, that turns out to be a problem. It requires that, that this housing be clustered around a commercial center. Which in, in a lot of cases, in the GWAP, means a new commercial center. Which, which it would not necessarily be accessible to the existing population. Now, there is a provision that says if you happen to build this near an existing commercial development, that's okay, you could proceed with it. But that's a, that's just very limited.
But you can't do it just by, out by.
Can't put it out by itself. And, and so, that seems to be al- almost the hammer that, that, that drives the death nail in this, at, at, at least in its current form. So as I say, my, my, my best sort of comment is that it's probably not a great deal of harm in, in adopting it, but it's probably not going to accomplish a lot for us. And so, you know, simply taking no action is also an option. If at all that made any sense.
How mu-, what timeframe do you think it would take to rec-, recraft it? To incorporate, or would it be worth recrafting?
Or do we need to go back through the planning commission and everything else if we're doing that much?
Probably would. It, it turns out, and I, and Josh, I'd like for you to comment on this. A very, you know, careful reading of the mixed use in this traditional neighborhood, that they're, they're quite duplicative, as it turns out. Some of that was intentional, a- a- as, as we know. But they may be duplicative to the point where we don't need both of them. Especially given that we already have an R three for, for planning.
Put an R three in, and they don't have to be close to a business.
Right, right.
So if it's not a motion, this will just die, and we could resurrect it at some later date if we wanted.
Yeah, I was trying to cram a lot of history here. The, the, the discussion was had, you, you guys may recall some of this. You've designated areas on the, the GWAP maps that call strictly for residential. There's not a whole lot of it, but it is there, so you need a, a zoning district that can accommodate that designation. And the question was raised, do we want more R three-type development? Do we want more Lake of the Woods, do we want more Wilderness Shores, that type of thing? And the consensus at the time was no, not really, but let's not get rid of R three. So, the T and D district is meant to fill that void where you have increased design standards. There's still a commercial component to it, but it allows another option for residential development, so. I, I think we would be well-served to try to combine the elements of two and kind of come up with a, with a Frankenstein approach there.
I don't like the term, but.
Well, T and D's are very specific in what, kind of what they're intended to accomplish, so. Well, once we do this, it's not really a T and D anymore, so we'd probably want to call it something different, but I, I think we can, we can get there if that's the board's wish.
Well, if we're looking at the GWAP area, now, when somebody comes in for a rezoning, we have, we have said that in the GWAP area, we want these things here. So there's a little more leverage for approval than if a guy comes in with an R three.
Except for that commercial component.
Well, the one, I mean, the one tweak you could, you could do on that is, is, yeah, because heaven, in the past, did, did a whole lot with the. having in the past, did, uh, did a whole lot with the T and D's, uh, and I think that's more a model that you're looking for, is we're trying to create an area. But in, in areas where development has already led the way, if you need to do something with additional.
But then, but then you would meet this criteria if you already have the development. You already have the commercial development.
But then, then the R-three allows you to do the development, but not tie it to, uh, something that has to be built. But, but tying it more to what's already there, and not necessarily on top of it, but within one thousand feet or what?
What we're saying with the, uh, with the, with the, uh, traditional, uh, we have, uh, uh, a different, we have better design standards that we don't have in, in R-three.
Yeah, but it, it doesn't have to be R-three, it can be a modified version of R-three. You don't want the design standards, but it, it allow you a little more flexibility in what you're doing to accommodate more housing if you need it. But if you, if you tie it to what's already been built, you've gotta put the horse in front of the cart.
Well, to give us a little more working time.
But then you can add an extra cart.
Right. So to give us a little more time for recrafting it, if we just let it die, we can bring it back at a future date, right? Through the, uh, planning.
You'd have to do a whole planning commission.
You have to go back to planning and re-advertising and all that, yeah.
So.
It, but my.
All we have available then, uh, is the R-three in the GWAP area, until we get something else recrafted.
Well, you'll have the mixed use too, if what's, what's.
You have the mixed use.
Once we, a- and, and that's somewhat what this is, I mean, the, i- if you're interested in the language, it, it, line three seventy-four, I guess is where it starts. And it, uh, it talks about a, a large central plaza or square within the core is required. And, but then it says, if it, if it abuts a considerably sized commercial district, then that might be, then you might be able to treat this as an infill development, and you utilize that, 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 uh, existing district. But that's, w- we, we know that's gonna be very few, i- 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 you know, in, in terms of the area that's out there, so.
Yeah, the other thought occurred to me, we've done this in the past, is, um, basically keep it as is, but add some flexibility for the board. Since this is all gonna be a development plan you all are approving anyway, um, give you all some discretion to kind of waive certain items, and then that kind of avoids the conflict that comes with the required commercial area.
Well, the other thing we, we could do is ju-, same kind of thing we did with the, uh, mixed use one, is to, uh, defer action for a couple of weeks and, and, uh, allow you to come back with a recommendation e- either to delay this, or stop this, and, and merge something, or go in and try to, uh, tweak the language in a few places to, uh, to make this, you know, a little bit more flexible in, in terms of how it can, where it can be applied.
How about four weeks, would that be a?
Yeah, that would be better, because you can get the, you can get the one section, concentrate on that and get it done, and then have some more time to work on the other one.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
First meeting in August.
So, so do, do the mixed use one in two weeks, and do this one the first meeting in August.
Okay. I guess you guys will just need to defer action on both at this point, then? The specific dates.
So that, that was your motion, right?
That was my motion.
Which one, which one was your?
To defer, uh, the, the.
We already have a motion and a vote to defer the second
Right.
one to the July twenty-fourth meeting. We just need a motion and a vote.
To the August.
August fourteenth meeting.
August fourteenth. That would be the, um, T and D, correct?
Yes.
Defer that to the August fourteenth meeting.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did you wanna discuss the R-three at this time, in terms of keeping it, allowing it, or? Or did you wanna break that subject at a later date?
Uh, it probably needs to happen in the context of whatever we do with this T and D. I mean, I don't think we.
We can't do anything with it tonight.
No, and, and I don't know that we're, I don't know that we're on a path to completely do away with it, or anything like that. I mean, it certainly has to exist for the rest of the, the county. Uh, and, and so, I, I, I think it just, maybe we, we create something new for the, the GWAP area, and we won't know that till, till four weeks. All right, I need another motion.
Good journey.
All in favor, pack up.